We're ready, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. What's your legion, please? I'd like to be legioned to fly the United States of America. It's repulsive, which is science. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A motion for a meeting.
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I have no comments for this evening, so we'll go ahead on to number two. Site plan modification discussion, SP 22-007, South Fire Station, 400 Prospect Street, map 78 lot 2, the applicant town is still in request to discuss a proposed site plan modification for dumpster enclosure. The applicant has requested to change the enclosure material from the... Change the enclosure material from the proposed institutional grade steel system to either a commercial grade black vinyl coated chain link fence or institutional grade cedar fencing. Will the applicant please come up and talk and introduce himself and go?
Should I be in front? I can see the back pocket.
That's it. Is it blind or isn't?
Glenn Gollert, Doorway Architects, project manager for the fire station projects. We had specified a very sophisticated fence, like you would see on Main Street on the front, like we had a more prominent building, this facade, a street facing presence. And honestly, last fall, when the general contractor brought up the point as he was finding out all his site features, he said, geez, do you guys know you own a $45,000, $50,000 dumpster enclosure? I said, uh, didn't realize it was that expensive. So we asked them what they would recommend, and the first thing we talked about cedar, but punted that because we know the reaction is probably more of a Home Depot sake style, which is not the intent. I think the... I guess all the pictures. This is a beautiful bust, you know, eight inch square cedar post, commercial or institutional grade fence. That would save almost $20,000, and obviously the... Which I know you guys aren't great fans of the black vinyl chain link with the vision slats in it. That saves even more, and I would love to talk to you guys and see if I can convince you to save some money.
Wouldn't we end up... Around the site that we won't want the black fence around the type, so just...
We did. It was a visual thing to not make it so pronounced, right? It's really now you can see that that building sits in a little wooded area, and I think the white vinyl fence would have made it almost look more enclosed or more noticeable.
Yeah, I think it was a good choice to go with that.
Yeah, and we still owe you guys a walk in the next month and a half or so as they start beginning the landscape. I know it's part of the work conditions. We had an agreement to go out there, see when the trees are leafing out, what you guys thought of the proposed design, and if we should move or add plantings to give more screening for the neighbors. So it's exciting to get to that point in the project at last, so we're thinking about this stuff. And so every penny counts, so here I am. And after working with Craig and Mark and the engineering folks and talking with Bill, we came to these, and I know if you guys say, no way, get out of here, I understand. Been here.
Personally, I don't have a problem with the chain link. It's not like this... People are going to be walking around pulling on the slats and screwing around with it or anything, and that would be the least maintenance wise. The cedar, you know, what do you get, 10, 15 years, it's going to start to rot at some point.
Yep.
You know?
Now, to mention that on the cedar, you look at that, and if something backs into or whatever, now to try to match that, no, I'm just saying it becomes...
We do... That's a good point, though. You bring up a good point. We do have, you know, six inch diameter steel ballers protecting the frontings, protecting the inside.
Right, but if they... Someone brings a dumpster back in, are those going to be roll... Actually, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but are those going to be like roll-in, roll-out dumpsters? Are they...
Yeah, a small little three yard, it's kind of a vertical form.
It's not the big ten yarder.
It's the ones that lift up over the truck, I think.
Right.
Right, so he's got to roll it out, so even more so, you know, at 3:00 in the morning, they're just going to fly it back in, so... If you go with the chain link, I don't have an issue with it, but I would almost like to see if it's a roll-in, roll-out, kind of like a colored chair rail at the three-foot level.
Yeah.
You know, it wouldn't cost much to put a pipe at that level to protect
Right.
the chain length and the slats.
It's a good point. I wonder if we could find out if they even need to move it, or if the truck, or the driver just opens the gate, goes in, picks it up, dumps it, puts it down.
That would be the type I would think of, wouldn't it?
Right. Which brings up another question, looking at the drawing. If it's going to be a three yard, and it's going to be one dumpster, you don't have anything actually there for recycling.
I'm not 100% sure of what the fire department's plan is, but
Right.
if it was sized for a three or a five yard bin, they could frankly put roller waves, you know, blue trash bins in there.
No, but what I...
And then the city, the town could come pick that up.
Right, but what I'm saying is there should be something in the plan, you know, as far as recycling, because I look at the fire station as more like a household trash. They're going to have their takeaway food, they're going to have their disposable bottles, they're going to have that... They're going to generate as much recyclable material as they are trash. So...
But they do in the building, both in the kitchen and the pantry areas and on the ground floor, sort of an exterior operations, if you will, things like a lawnmower and sow blower and de-icer. There's room in there for both recycling and garbage on its way out, so I'm not sure what the fire department's typical operations are for recycling and trash.
So what do they have at the other fire stations? They all have dumpsters or...
Yeah, they just have a dumpster over at Station 2 on Central. I'm not exactly sure what they have right here on Freeman.
We'll have to get the climate committee to go visit the fire station.
And they're going to have to compost.
So...
They'd be very proud of our thermal breaks and our envelope design. It's an aggressively efficient building, but we're not... I'll be dumpster fences.
Yeah, right, getting back on topic.
Those are six foot fences on us?
Yeah.
I have them. With the chain link, I think that would be a...
Look at the money back in the budget.
A little bit of ballots, I think, are important, too.
Yep.
How's the change orders going on that? Does this help that?
Any good helps. We've had some credits, we've had some expenses, but it's been a relatively low percent. The biggest one is this ledge, it's unforeseen pile of rock. As far as design changes or field conditions, we're running at about 1% of the construction costs, so that's about a third of what you would typically see at this point. So I am proud to give money back, believe me, that is my job.
How much was the ledge over on?
About $540,000, $550,000.
Really?
Thankfully...
I thought we had done some borings up there ahead of time.
We did. Craig's tired of hearing this, but I like to think of it like a battleship game where you're going around on this air. Like I can't... We did 30 plus pits and borings, and we knew there was some unsuitables, we knew there was some store fill, nothing like that. They hit some big boulders in a few areas, but nothing like this gigantic amount of ledge.
It seems...
Did they leave a placenta on?
They did.
Between turnpike street and park street, there's ledge all over the place in there. I mean, if you tell us, we would have... I ran into a building in my own house.
Yeah, no, but you know, I think that in the broad sense, it's a good question, and I think we had a good meeting both at FinCom and Select Board. We're still under budget. The owner's project manager did a good job leaving a healthy contingency, right? And that is baked into the project cost, and we've not dipped into the rent, so to speak. We're still under that. I would rather have had $500,000 not spent on ledge and give it to these guys for nicer furniture or fitness equipment or, you know, what other stuff they could use for. But we still have Freeman Street, and that's tracking pretty well, and we're saving some money there as well, so...
Is that bound up to bid?
That will be at the end of the summer.
End of the summer.
Yep. We're going to time it so that that hits the street, so that when we get a general contractor underway, the fire department's moving out, and the GC ends up with Freeman Street as an empty shell, which is nice.
That will be coming before this board, for your plan of view.
Freeman Street will. So, Mr. Chairman, if they... I would recommend that somebody make a motion that...
I'd like to have to grab a motion for what we recommend.
Replace the expensive fencing with chain link fence.
As proposed.
To comply with chain fencing.
Second?
With a bumper rail at the three-foot level.
We could do that, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I don't know if we have to add that or not, or...
If you want to have it in the decision, we're...
That way it doesn't get forgotten, that's all.
You need that, though? I mean, you have all those ballers.
Well, I just picture someone coming in, and it's going to suck, then you see the inside of the fence.
But I don't think it's going to be the roll ones. I think it's going to be just the three yards, the pick ones, they won't roll. But, I mean, we can put it on, just in case it is, but I think...
There are... The ballers are fairly tightly spaced. It's actually a change where we push back on, the miscellaneous metals subcontractor said they didn't own as many as we showed, and we said, yes, you do. So it'd be hard to thread the needle through the ballers to hit the fence.
Okay.
Okay, so not needed.
Yeah, actually, if you look at the plan, you can see the ballers, the black dots.
Right.
So they're around the inside of the fence, so I think it's pretty well protected.
So I have a motion for a second, all in favor?
Second?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Okay. What's he doing with Freeman Street? That would be an easy one.
Nice one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number three, a new public training will be held on petition for site plan approval located at 1000 Technology Drive, assesses map 105, watch 002, in an ironed field zone zoning district, the applicant, BOS 5, Amazon fulfillment center, 1000 Technology Center Drive, Stoughton Mass, represented by Ryan McKeown, ASM Engineering Consultants LLC, 221 E-Commerce, Andover, Kansas, 67002, for site plan review under section 10.6.2, for the proposed construction of two new guard shacks, installation of an automated gate system, reconfiguration, and site modification to accommodate two guard shacks. The proposed project will increase the impervious area by 4,056 plus or minus square feet. The applicant has requested waivers to section 10.6, 10, items B, C, D, and E, development impact report, and not provided visual impact, environmental impact, economic impact, and community impact assessments. The owner, come up and explain what he's looking for.
Okay. Hold this for Ryan McKeown with ASM Engineering. Appreciate everything here. So, Amazon across the nation has been upgrading their facilities, and so this one is new, and so we've been working on this project for a while, went through a bunch of modifications. What they're doing is adding, basically replacing the existing guard shacks that are wore out, outdated, adding restrooms, just basically upgrading them to current standards. And then the other thing that they're adding is a remote license plate readers and automated or remote gate access. So what this does is basically allows the trucks to get off like Reebok Drive a little bit quicker. They're not looking to increase volume at this site, they're just wanting to make it more efficient. So with the license plate readers and automated gates, they're able to get the trucks in and out about half the time. So typically, it's taking about five minutes to check them in. What they've been seeing is about two minutes or so to get a truck checked in, so it just cuts that time in about half. And so what we're doing with this side is making some accommodations. We're keeping one lane in, we're kind of performing this kind of two-way traffic, we're trying to make a one-way flow around the site. The other thing that we're doing with this side is to kind of mitigate some of that traffic also with this. And so the impervious area, we're making some very minor increase in that area, a little bit, but we ramp the calks on the overall, and it's such a small area to the overall area, it just doesn't make an impact, and we've actually got some calculations here that I can submit those after this meeting to show that, so...
Mr. Chairman, just when I reviewed the drawings, I see what you put up on the plan, I was hoping that you had something about repaving or repairing the access roadway up to Amazon. I don't see any of that.
We had a conversation earlier with Bill, and we had... That had been brought up, and since there may be a second project coming in where Amazon wants to add a second lane, but at this time, they thought with... We weren't changing, since we were not changing the traffic pattern or adding trucks to that area, that we would leave Reebok Drive alone at this point in time, and if they proceed forward with the second phase of the project, where they add in a second check-in lane, then at that point in time, we'd have a discussion of going back and doing a full repair on that Reebok Drive. We got some estimates on it, and it was coming in, I think, $500,000, $600,000, $700,000 to repair that road, so which was pretty significant increase for Amazon to take on at this time, so...
All right, I'm going to... I mean, you can continue on, I'm going to give my recommendation is that we're not going to look at this, or we can... I can have a negative termination on this project until something happens with that road.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not... I'm just the chairman, the board can do what they want, but this had come before us on a previous pre-application meeting, and the stipulation at that point, if they wanted to do any of the work up here, that we wanted to get that road repaired, it's just because of the condition of the way that the town is, and that's just my opinion on it. You can continue on with your presentation, you can ask the board for a vote to go forward, it's up to you right now how you want to go forward, but I'm just letting you know upfront, that's my thought process right now.
And Ryan, one of the things, there is... There was an application that was withdrawn by the Cube Smart, and they're part of the owners of the road, and they're evaluating the road as well, so it really... And I think they want to move forward with their project, and so we really need to... They said that they have not been able to get a hold of Amazon, so you're a good conduit for the other portion of the folks that are part owner of that private road to look at partnering with, and we can look at, you know, putting that together, a meeting. So I know that the road, we told you in a pre-app, was a big issue, the chairman did. That's still an issue, I believe we should still, Mr. Chairman, go through, address everything, and they... So they need what they need to do for their site plan, but what they also need to do, and put them in touch with the other private owner of the portion of that road, and then, you know, work on partnering with that and looking at the options of that. Is that fine, Ryan?
Yeah, yeah, and then I can get with you tomorrow and get that contact information.
Okay.
And I can be the liaison between Amazon and them to see if we can get something moving forward there.
Okay.
Any other comments from Craig, or you want to project?
I'm going to let Craig. This is essentially a huge engineering comments, they're minimal on the landscaping, but we've covered everything in the review memo.
Yeah, so I prepared a technical review letter for you all. This is not so much into the weeds as I typically go, because the site plans as submitted, while they contain an awful lot of information, it's a big set. It's just not compiled the way that we typically see it, and I found myself having to flip back and forth multiple sheets to, you know, verify if things had conflicts, and it just became very burdensome and the way the plans are assembled. So we're asking for, you know, a more typical set of site plans to be submitted so that we can, you know, efficiently review it, and that's outlined in our... In the zoning bylaws, you know, what the contents are. I mean, all the information's there, Ryan, but it's just a bit cumbersome for us to...
It's in 52 sheets when it should be in about three or four.
Okay, yeah.
And we've had this conversation.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'll get with you guys here as we discussed, and kind of go over what you're looking for, and then I'll get that streamlined for you.
Right, so at the next meeting that is before you, I'll have some more in-depth comments probably about the drainage system design, the utilities and things of that nature, but I have, you know, a bunch of sort of more upper level review comments. Comment number two is about the stormwater drainage. Now, with a project like this where it's such a large site, and there's a lot of it that's already developed, there's a huge amount of impervious cover out there, what they're changing is really only a fraction of it, but they are stating that there's an increase. So in my mind, there's two options, so either find some areas to reduce the impervious cover so that we balance it out or reduce it, or we have to see that the existing stormwater system can accommodate it, even though it is a small increase, as you stated, on the plan, Ryan. I think we just need to make sure that the ponds can handle whatever is being increased, so... I do see some opportunities on the site for some pavement removal and increase in the pervious cover, particularly along the southern access point.
Is that down near the pond that's there?
No, it's right here.
No, so where the driveway splits and you can go up alongside a BJ's, and then if you take a right, you're heading into the Amazon site, right? So you have a large area that's shown as just some striping there. I think that could be pulled out and get some green space in that area. And I'd also like to see where you have the two-way traffic at that southern entrance, a more formalized configuration there that lets drivers know that if they continue to go into the right, that they're going to be trapped in the truck entrance, so they really need to split off and head north. I think you can do that with some curbing and signage, as well as adding some impervious cover there, so I can go over that with you. I've kind of... I've sketched it up a little bit of what I thought might work, and hopefully you see that that works for you, too. I just don't want to see, you know, cars getting stuck down in your automatic plate reader and having to back out down that driveway, so...
Okay, yeah, we can address the signs there, and I'll work with you on that. And then as far as where the striping was, and I talked to Bill a little bit about this, they want to leave that there for that future lane expansion if it ever happens. So if we look for more of a permanent solution, I would probably more move it to maybe removing some of the paving over there on the north side. And they're actually... Amazon just got with me like two days ago, and came up with another configuration for that north side, so I need to get with you on that, which could reach that impervious area, and maybe that whole issue goes away, actually have more pervious area, so...
Great, yeah, I think you see what I'm driving at there, though, so we can... There's some flexibility, there's some spots on the site where we can make that balance happen.
Okay, perfect.
This is kind of another big one that we've had with previous projects that have come before us for modification and so forth, but the stormwater O&M, now this site was permitted, you know, I don't know, probably eight, 10 years ago, and the stormwater basins constructed, we just need to make sure that they've been following their O&M plan, so we... The board typically requires that the O&M plan is recorded with the decision, so that's kind of a big one, so we'd just like to make sure that Amazon's been keeping up with catch basin cleanings and maintaining the stormwater basins on site.
Is there a board technique in it?
I believe there is. It looked like in the O&M that was filed with the previous application that there was a board technique. I couldn't confirm where it was on the site just yet, but, you know, vacuum cleaning of that, whatever items are... That comprise your stormwater facilities, we need to just see that you've been maintaining them.
I have a question on that.
Sure.
When they do that work, they must record it in some log. Where does that log go?
So...
Who reviews that log?
So they have what they call a SWIP, a Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan, and the owners and applicants are supposed to be quarterly inspecting things or inspecting things after long live rainstorms, and it should be kept on file at their facility. Ideally, if the town was staffed with 10 more engineers, we could be able to, you know, accept and review them all for all the private businesses in town, but we just don't have that kind of staffing. So when we get to points like this where applicants come before us, we'd like to make sure that...
They're probably going to have to go clean something they haven't cleaned.
No, the reason why I ask is my previous position, that was one of the things I was responsible for, and the question being is, okay, you do all this work, but who gets to keep the checks and balances? And what you're saying is, for example, now, does Amazon say, okay, they're here for something, some change, can we request those records at the next meeting?
That's what we kind of want.
Yes, I was saying.
Okay.
He's asking for some... They can provide records that they have done it, and if they have been lax over the several years, which maybe they have, maybe they haven't, then we'll require them to perform maintenance before we'd issue the permit.
Okay, so we're requesting that, that was what I'm getting to.
There's usually a high likelihood that a lot of times they have done them for a while, but then they don't.
Depends on who's the project man... Who's the facilities manager at the town?
And these are just about anywhere, and so whenever they come in, you know, they're going to have to go in and, you know, Ryan already knows he's going to have to go in and have a local person come look at it. I bet they're going to have to be pumped out, and I wouldn't be surprised.
So this is a good point for this board to, you know, put a stop in and say, okay, have you done this? This is where we get to checking on it.
Right. The other thing is, when you come down that driveway, that's a double lane driveway, and you're going to go out into Page Street, I noticed that saying that BJ sells diesel fuel. Trucks will take a sharp right-hand turn, and they've actually wiped out that light that was there. They now have a large boulder there to protect that light. Now, my question is, does Amazon own to that intersection, or actually, do they own or lease? Maybe that's...
That's why we can't get it repaid. I notice one's why.
They... Amazon doesn't own this facility, they lease it, so they're the tenant, so they're going to have to work with their owner, and they're going to have to work with the other owners that I'm going to put Ryan in touch with regarding the road. These trucks have done a tremendous amount of damage to that road.
Oh, I see it all... I almost lost a rim over it.
Yeah.
But...
And talk to Cube's...
That's why we're pushing to have the road.
And if you talk to Cube Smart, they have a flashing beacon for their pedestrian, and prior to them blocking off that parking lot, the Amazon delivery trucks couldn't get in at night, would take that light out and park in that big vacant parking lot that they want to, if you recall from the hearing.
Right, no, but I...
So everyone has some responsibility into this road. It's private.
Okay.
And it's just become to a tipping point.
One other quick question, at this facility, is this where the vans are loaded up?
So there's tractor trailers in the south side, but the front, the north entrance has an area for, I think you call them cube trucks on your plan, so I think the vans come in and out in the north entrance.
Okay, and then they go out Technology Drive.
Right, they can exit onto Technology Drive, yeah.
I'm just trying to get a feel for this building.
Yeah, let's see if we... Can we try to go through some more of this?
Okay, yeah, so comment number four, the traffic letter that was submitted is very brief for a project like this. I understand that we're increasing... We're only looking to increase efficiency, but my concern here is that once we increase efficiency, volume will follow. And typically, when we look at, you know, traffic volume generated from a site, it's based on the size of the facility, we're not really increasing any square footage, so in theory, if we were to calculate it in that regard, there is no increase, but I think with the efficiency of these guard shacks, they have the ability now to process more trucks through there. I'd like to hear that addressed from your traffic engineer, that there will either will not be an increase in volume, but I'd like to hear some sort of response from the applicant on that regard. I'm not sure how they're going to address it.
Okay, Amazon has an internal traffic study, we've actually gone through this on a couple others, so I can get with them as far as their logistics and have them...
So I can get with them far as their logistics and have them provide some data to show. You know, that the truck traffic's not gonna complete uh increase, which they've ensured me it wouldn't, um. Cause the the main concern was to get the traffic off Reebok Drive quicker. So, but I'll have Amazon put together documentation for you for the next meeting for that also.
Great, thank you. Um, I talked a little bit about comment number five, which is the pavement and curving configuration down on the south entrance. I don't need to go over that again, uh and number six, which was removal of that pavement in that striped area. Uh, we've also discussed pavement sections on Reebok Drive that need to be repaired. I think even leading up into the area that Amazon leases, if you go on to the street, you will go on to the site, the pavements and just. Really tough condition. Uh, comment number eight is a landscaping plan shall be submitted for review. Um, there are several trees on the north side that need to be uh removed in order to install the the north guard shack. Um, so we need to mitigate those and then propose uh whatever new landscaping would go along with part of this project.
Okay.
Um, and then. Uh, the last nine and ten are regards to uh the sewer connection, so each of these guard shacks are gonna have. Bathrooms and you have sewer ejectors, we have, you have sewer profiles and things of that nature, but. Uh, I didn't see anything in the plans for what types of pumps or how we would be. Uh, operation. How those pumps would be operational, so we need more details.
You know, provide more, it it's basically a a turnkey package that we put in these little sump pumps. So, and I can provide that information to you, so it's a turnkey, we basically power up to them, they've got a gold system in there, cause they. They fill up, um, there's basically just one bathroom in each guard shack, so that's all filling, so it's pretty low flow.
Yeah.
Um, but uh we we will have the specs on that. Um, that, we have, I think, a couple that the contractor and usually, um, but I'll see if I can. Provide them, basically provide you the facts that what we're asking them, what the contractor to get, so.
Okay, great, appreciate that. Um. You will need to apply for a sewer connection permit through the engineering department, once we go through the site plan review process, um. And a a licensed contractor needs to make that application, so uh you'll need a local contractor to do that.
What about water supply?
That's down, it's down within this review.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll get to it.
Yeah. Um. And then uh just another comment about the the plan um assembly, that, you know, the construction details, we have typical construction details for the town. Um, I think your catch basins were like square catch basins on the plans, those, we don't use those here in in Massachusetts, so.
And we did notice that some of your details um referenced Los Angeles and between Los Angeles and Boston. Okay, sorry, that I got. So you, you've hit all of the construction details between uh the continent.
Yeah, coast to coast.
You hit coast to coast, you have Los Angeles and Boston.
And and for now, that sums up the the high-level review, so once we get that other um revised set of site plans, I'll I'll dig in a little more deeply on to. You know, what we're doing with catch basins and drainage and things like that, um. But that's it for now for for engineering, um, we did get some comments from the water, oh, sewer um superintendent. Um, and Ryan has a copy of this.
Yeah, Ryan, you got a copy that the the two-inch meter was installed at Amazon. And he says, he knows is the location of the water services, are they before the two-inch meter? Uh, cause you, you obviously, I gave this letter to you soon as I got it. Uh, we've, he said that if it's before the, then you're gonna need to install five, five eighths inch meters. So you need to know, is the water that you're tapping into. Is it before or after that two-inch water meter that was put in in two thousand nineteen? Okay, so I can answer that question, um, so on the south side, we are tapping into the building, so that'll be. So that one's gonna be fine, cause we're going inside the building um to access water for the south guard shack, the north guard shack, I'm gonna have to confirm. Where the uh meter's at, and that one we either might have to add the five eighths or I might have to adjust it. To hook into the two-inch, so I have to, I have to do some. Said they wouldn't mind helping, uh, if you notice, comment number three, the water department would prefer to field verify the existing water service to the building. And the meter location too. Okay, perfect. So if you, if you'd let us know where you think it is on your plan, I will then uh have um. You can send me that like kinda, here's the one sheet, you know, you can send me an email with the sheet and I can give it to the water department, says. Here's where they think the two-inch meter, here's where the engineers say it is, but where is it? Okay, okay. Yep.
That's all I have.
Brian, the only other question I had was, um, you're reducing the parking by some twenty-some odd spaces. And I don't know what the requirements for the parking on that side of the building or whether. We're violating with the zoning code is coming from the add to the deduct on those parking.
Uh, he does have a a table in the plans. They seem to still.
Yeah, they, I think they still exceed the parking.
Yes.
So, um, are there any other kind of comments? We've kind of hit a high level, it's 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 a a large set of plans and there's. You know, and we've, when when they were submitted, we we actually, I talked to the engineer and I said. We're, here's, here's the first thing we're gonna tell you, so none of this is is shocking to to Ryan on any of this.
So, so you said you think they exceed the parking?
Yeah.
So they could actually, we do cut out some of the uh parking here.
And that might be how they solve their stormwater.
Exactly.
So, and I think they, and we, and we've had that discussion internally. You know, it would be easier to remove parking than, cause I don't believe they have the calculations. Do you, you don't have the calculations for the pond that can demonstrate or or do you, cause at at one point you did not, so. Uh, I do have it now, I can send to you, it's, it's uh pretty thick, like forty, fifty pages of calculations, so.
Was that the previous design, I I do have um calculations from. Uh, the the last um design here.
Yeah, and I believe we, after after the pre-app, we gave you all the information we have, I believe. So, I assume you wanna schedule a Zoom meeting with myself. And Craig to kind of go over format and 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 the substantive to dive down a little bit. Into this. Yes, yeah. So, we can look at doing that in the next week or two.
Yeah.
Week or so. Okay. So if we, if we do the meeting in the next week, um. What's your, let's say, first of next week, we we can meet, uh, I think we're both fairly flexible. Once we do that, what is your turnaround time? Because I I'm logistically, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to tonight request a continuance. So I need to logistically look at, you know, um, time for us to review it, so. Let's say by the end of next week, we we've met, we know where we're going, um. You know. Potentially, uh, at least two weeks, if 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 not, we, depending on. Just depends on what we gotta do, I I'd say two for sure, we could definitely have it turned around, um, just. The the one concern i- is that Reebok, Reebok Drive, how to, how that can take a little more time. Um, or we want to get this approved and kind of address that separately and make this contingent on that, or. Well, I I I think you can, you can, I would look at doing it two, two ways, one is. You need to work on the Reebok Drive because you're ultimately, the chairman and and some other members are, as you know, are. You know, that's very, uh, that's a hu- huge issue. We can work through the technical and get it all ready to go, and then, and then we're just waiting on the Reebok Drive issues. So, uh, our next meeting is the twenty-fifth of April. You 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 pretty much aren't even gonna probably submit before, by then, I'm looking at the calendar, that's three weeks. Um. Uh, and we need several times, um. So. Do you think we can? Tentatively look at the. May ninth? I I think that's a lot more realistic, um, to give you guys time to review and. And if there is any adjustments, then I can re- get everything readjusted, and I I think that's a lot better. Scenario. Okay, so. So I use, you need to request a continuance to May ninth. Okay, I request the continuance to May ninth.
I make a motion, we continue to May ninth.
And Ryan, just uh so we're all clear that, you know, if that's all you've got at that point, we'll review the technical, but. You may, you may not want us to vote on it until you get Amazon's drive straightened out.
Okay.
Okay, I'm I'm not gonna do it in two pieces, it's, you know, we're gonna do it, we'll vote the whole thing.
And isn't Cube Smart, they they're basically ready to go, but they withdrew because of this issue with the road.
Correct.
So there's two projects in the in the hanging here.
Yeah, and and the owners of the Cube Smart property, they own other properties along this, so that they're, they're. They're uh, they're an owner of this road, just like you're the owner of this property. Okay. And so I can put you in touch with the owner and their engineer. Perfect. So, uh. Got a place on it tomorrow? And then tomorrow morning, tomorrow mor- I can do that, and then tomorrow morning, we'll, we'll work with. The you and Michelle and Craig and I to schedule a a a Zoom meeting uh first of next week. Okay, perfect, I appreciate that. Okay, okay, thank you very much. All right, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Ryan.
Bye.
Okay, um, moving on to the next item, item number four, bond release memo for old close projects. Phil, I know you wanna talk about that.
Okay. The. This has been two and a half weeks of my life, literally, that's all I literally did for two and a half weeks. I was given this spreadsheet. From the treasure collector. And it doesn't surprise me because when I worked in Fairhaven, I had to do the same thing. And when I worked in Fall River, I was given one of these, um. These bonds date back from, uh, the earliest one is nineteen eighty-six and then they. Or the latest one is, uh, you know, two thousand twenty-three. Um, I have gone through, there's like twenty-seven bonds on here, a lot of them are subdivisions. Um, and then the the newer ones are landscape bonds. Uh, in the memo, um. I have the bonds that I'm recommending that we release. Um, there was a subdivision, D and E Streets, E Street is now O'Hare Circle. Um. There's, you know, as you can see, little over three thousand respectively each, um. On the, on these subdivisions, they've been approved. Uh, D and E was a sewer plan, it's been the sewer plan. Sewers installed and has been approved, uh, and so there's no need to uh hold that. Uh, Drinkwater Grove Estates, which is Drinkwater, um, it's an accepted street. There's no reason to keep the bond, we we, we have no idea, you know, it just. They just never claimed, the the bonds, the applicant never claimed the bond. They never, once it was accepted, the applicant didn't even realize that he had sixteen hundred dollars.
Walked away.
Yeah, oh, wait till I get to one of the last ones, you're gonna love some of these.
I I read, I read through this.
Okay.
It leads to a couple of questions.
It's exhaustive, the Lenox Village, it's been approved, um, and so. There's no reason to keep the bond, uh, the Fawnwood Estates, um. Uh, the street's been accepted, there's no reason to keep the bond. Um, there's a Evanswood subdivision, uh, was accepted, no reason to keep the bond. Um, I I've looked through why we retain three thousand to do some things before acceptance. The applicant, you know, never, never asked for it. Um, Irwin Street and Hillside, I think the bond was released. And this is what we believe is interest, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. Um, I'm gonna let you know the street's not accepted, um, we really, uh. I spent almost two hundred and, I spent more than two hundred and thirty-three dollars just looking at it and talking to you tonight. Uh, so we're kind of saying, we just, it's, we feel it's just in- interest that it had already. The work, the sewer work had been done and the sewer work is approved, so we're recommending releasing the two hundred and thirty-three.
The question I have on that was, what was the bond being held?
For sewer, the bond appears to be, it says right here, the bond appears to be for sewer work for the two streets. The sewer's been installed and is operational and the streets are unaccepted. And I said the mound is too small and has uh no need to retain it. The sewer's already being, it's our, it's already operational and it's it's part of our sewer system. So we we, the the treasure collector on this one says, she goes, I think this was interest on. You know, a lot of these bonds, like the next one, the Shopper's Point, that's a twenty-five thousand dollar bond. That was put in whenever it was done. We're releasing, we would release thirty-one thousand because that's the interest between twenty-five and and thirty-one is interest.
Okay.
These are interest-bearing accounts, um, and then I put on that one. The condition on, it tells you, i- it was to be held for two years and then for monitoring, and that's. That development has been done for quite a while, uh, recommending it, um. The Fessent Hill, um, run, um. Actually, that one indicates, there's a indication, there's a a memo from in the files that I could see. And two thousand four, that to release the entire amount, however, it was never done, I'm just putting it back on here just to.
Well, how much, how much is the amount bill, cause the the amount is an odd number you have up there.
The six thousand two, oh, I'm sorry.
Wow.
It's six thousand two hundred and ten dollars and six cents, not. Sorry, that's an extra zero. So.
A little bit of money there.
Yeah, that's an extra zero, no.
I haven't got back my chunk on that one.
Yeah, that's an extra zero, um, and then the next three are actually landscape bonds and. Um, I I, the philosophy I have, as I went and looked at these, they've been a long time. All these landscape are ninety to ninety-five percent installed and still there. It's lo- it's living, growing material, you know. It is unrealistic to require every bush and whatnot, um, like on the, on the mobile. There's an area where the trucks clearly were going over this landscape area and where a tree was. And that is next to a dumpster and it's now gravel, and so, you know, I I see no need to make them, you know, i- i- it's clear.
Overall, they 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 maintain.
After that mobile station you talked about, it looks very nice, yeah.
So, and so I look at it this way, my philosophy and recommendation as your professional staff is is that. When, if you can get, if you can over five, six, seven years, you know. You keep ninety to ninety-five percent of the landscaping and it's well-maintained and looks nice. That's successful and and so I'm recommending the mobile be released. Um, Wendy's, uh, their landscaping is uh about ninety-seven, there's only a handful of stuff that they didn't have. The only thing with that is, I'm recommending that you release it, we'll hold it, is is that the side, one side of the dumpster. The white vinyl dumpster enclosure, it appears that it's been hit and it's stacked behind the thing. We're working with Wendy's and we'll tell them, as soon as they, I've already contacted, um. I've been in contact with uh Wendy's to say, as soon as you fix this one piece of fence. You can request the twenty-five thousand if the planning board approves it. BJ's, same thing. They've got almost all the, well-maintained, their landscaping, and there is one panel of their dumpster enclosure. And I'm going to let you know that I have emailed the COO, never got a reply. Uh, Kelly in our office uh does the licensing and has a physical contact at BJ's. She called me, I talked to her, uh, she gave me, uh, she put me in touch with, through an email. With their facilities folks, their maintenance folks and their financial folks. And that's almost two weeks ago and I've yet to hear anything, I have forty-five thousand five hundred dollars that I wanna give back to them. And you do not know, I'm going to let, I'm going to.
Dollars for your cry.
I'm going to let you know, this is so ironic. How hard it will be to give the money back to Wendy's and to BJ's. It it's, it's rather astounding.
But this kind of leads to one of my questions, cause reading through this, there was a project. That the builder, whatever, that put up the bond is no longer involved, someone else came in and took it over. Now, who actually gets that bond?
Um, actually, and the reason the memo is this way. Um, actually, and the reason the memo is this way, because I've written it, I I, when I did the research, I wanted to include it. The, uh, I have, this is, the way I've done this memo to you is this gets translated to. All the, all of the owner and subsequent owner information goes to the collector. One of them, uh, I believe it was the D Street.
Yeah, D Street, that's the one that kind of caught my eye.
They, um. Uh, the original developer. Well, the original developer was these two gentlemen, uh, but this construction company, uh, took it over. And they are the ones, based on the information, uh. They assumed, uh, the other folks sold the subdivision and they assumed. There was an assumption of liability and an assumption of of rights, heirs and everything. So it will actually go to this construction company, and I have that information for, that's more. Not really the planning board's concern. The reason this memo is written this way is because I have painstakingly. I've had meetings, numerous meetings with. The treasurer collector on how to deal with this, and so I've structured this. To add the information she needs, so I don't, so I don't.
Well, legal counsel would probably have to look it over anyway.
Correct.
Okay.
And s- some of these, if they don't exist, then it goes to, you know, that's where these people get that mass money.
Find mass money.
Find mass money, literally, if we can't find them, we will then turn it over to the state. So, but. It is very, some of these files are extremely old. Some of these files are ex, actually, some of them we have no.
Make a motion that we approve.
Yeah, thank you.
As written, as it leaves.
We're approving the memo that.
To, you're approving, now you're, you're recommending. Approving the releases of the, of all of them, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Next item.
Just save the ten minutes.
Meeting minutes. So can we review please the meeting minutes from February eighth, two thousand twenty four?
I will say that I reviewed it. And I have no comments to add.
Okay, can I have a motion to a question?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from, uh, February eighth, as written.
Second. All in favor? Hey, can we review the minutes for February twenty second, twenty twenty four?
I read through the minutes and I find no proportions required.
Same here.
Aaron does a better job when he's home, doing it virtually, I think.
I do, I thought I'd just pop in tonight.
Nice to see you.
Actually, there's a second set of eyes on them, you get them to me and then I.
Okay, he he fixes them.
There's two sets of eyes on them, that's why, that's why.
Accept, uh, February twenty second, twenty twenty four minutes. Second, all in favor? Any other business for anybody?
Just please note that, um, we will not have a meeting on April eleventh. We have, the next meeting will be April twenty fifth.
Upstairs?
Uh, yes, upstairs.
You sure?
Pretty sure.
Finance committee's using that every night now.
Oh, yeah. Make a motion to close the meeting?
All in favor? Very much, everybody.